Father.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, morning, everybody. All meaning to order, we have a quorum, I take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
I'll second it.
Motion to second, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, we got our agenda, Rich, how you doing this morning?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I gave you a little paper there, that was that whole hospital thing that Woodbury County put together. I think the, the, the whole coin or the whole point of that was just the same, I think. I read through it, I'm trying to fully understand, but I think what they're saying is the legislature says seventy-five percent of all real taxes and not the reduced world taxes after you reduce it, so I think that's what they're saying, if you're at seventy-five percent now, they're gonna reduce it. They're telling you that if you do it, I, I think. You might need to read it, and I think you guys have been kind of maybe informed on too about what's going on, but it seems to me that if they say if we go by the reduction, if we go by the reduction and go seventy-five percent, we won't meet our seventy-five percent type of the code reads. We'll be lower than that, then we'll lose funding, so I think that's what they're trying to say in that letter, I don't know if you guys.
We hit on it down in the morning in January, they brought it up.
And if I, is that somewhere, I, I think the code says seventy-five percent of all available. But not.
Great, that was great valuation, I didn't invest on anything.
Right, I think what they're saying is, what I think they're worried about is some counties might think it's the reduced amount and it's not that, so I.
They said down there, if they did it that way, they'd never get there. You wouldn't get your seventy-five.
Right, 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 so I just wanted to kind of bring that, cause I think they're still trying to get that. There's a coalition now, and I think that they're trying to get the county engineers to, and I haven't responded, cause I don't know where you guys, what you guys feel about paying for a lobbyist to get it changed.
Well, we technically have ISAC, they're supposed to be doing that.
Right, right, so.
Say sometimes they don't do a whole lot for us.
But they were actually talking about, I think, I think Woodbury County is kind of spearheading this and trying to maybe even pay for a lobbyist and see how many counties want to get involved in paying for a lobbyist, change things or get things, cause I think they they shot from the hip here and didn't look at all the code sections to see how it's gonna affect everything else when you decided to do it, so. Anyway, that's kind of what the summary is that Woodbury County spent a lot of time putting together for you guys to read too, so. I thought it'd give you guys to look at.
Thank you.
Yeah, another thing is the, the final change order and the final pay request, I guess we gotta have that federal project signed off. Uh, the final pay request for that bridge on three ninety, getting that closed out. It turns out, I think the bid was um, five hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and forty-one, it's that that tied contract with Bitter County, he did that project, and they actually came in under by about six hundred dollars, so. The final payment thing is gonna be about five hundred and thirty-four thousand six twenty-nine thirteen, but that's all through the, the federal system and for that DOT pay system, so.
That was one over west, right, by the interstate?
Yep, yep, right.
All right, uh, is there a motion to approve the final pay for uh, the three ninetieth bridge project?
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Right, motions carry.
Oh, it stinks, but finding all four pages.
That's right.
We're trying to get it where we don't need to have wet signatures and we're still working on it. You guys still have to sign them, I didn't anyway, but I think I can transfer, submit it by pushing a button instead, so. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot to talk about today, I see we do have a discussion, possible action. Taking away this conservation building project, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be a, just a revolving discussion.
Okay.
To keep that project going. Those projects going.
I'm probably working on getting the money.
Yeah.
Right, so um. Hopefully things will slow down a bit and I can start talking to architects, I kind of was putting lists together for it. But I've been drawn away by closeouts projects and getting some design projects that we do have. Our, sorry, ours is already the, the related projects were kind of up, and I think we've got some bridge stuff we need to start tackling here soon too, but.
That's the questions we've been getting, I think is how long are these bridges gonna be closed?
Well, the, the, the terrible thing about it is you close it, now you've gotta go through all this survey, design, everything else to get them put back together, whereas if you could plan for it, and one of those bridges was was not even, you know, was posted for normal ratings and all of a sudden, the one west of your place, there was you know, it's all of a sudden, here it's great, and then a year later, two years later, it's, well, we gotta close it, well, darn it, we didn't even get a chance to plan for it, so. So we're, we're putting those in, but I'm gonna have to talk to WHKS a little bit, see if we can get some designs started and going, because I'm not gonna have time to do all three of them that quickly. Sure, so we'll start pushing on that, in the meantime, we'll start. Hopefully, maybe after budgets and stuff are turned in, we can get the architects involved on the conservation, I talked to do a conservation a little bit.
Yeah.
I don't wanna keep hold off, too long, braces keep coming up too, but.
Yeah, no, it's just something we wanna keep going, so, so we can constantly have discussion of moving forward.
And we already own the building, so that just won't.
You own, we own the one building already, we got the land and everything, right? So that's all.
Yeah, um, and I don't know if you're gonna start storing stuff out there, but uh, Mike Stevens had asked about cutting hay out there again this year.
Yeah.
So I told him, oh, we talked to you, but I said, we didn't see a problem with it, probably, it's because it was just a you know, you may be putting stuff out there, whatever, but we keep it somewhat.
Right, yeah, we're not gonna.
This way it's weed control, grass control for us, and they get some more crap off of it.
And I don't wanna have too much stuff in the way, if we're gonna start building stuff either, so we're all a little bit about put stuff far enough in the back, the line, we wouldn't have to do.
Right.
And you guys probably asked the attorney, but you should probably have a lease in place. And be able to turn, and be able to terminate it when you need to.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah. So.
Yeah, anything else?
Um, I've got, unless you guys have some questions.
You guys get anything?
No.
No, I don't care.
All right, drainage, I didn't see any claims. Uh, not that, we'll have some meetings here later this morning. Uh, regular claims, I did see those, you guys have any questions with the claims?
Nope.
Nope.
It's mostly approved by Mark, for a second?
I'll second it. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Cause that should be, that should be figured on that too.
Yeah. We have one now for anywhere for that.
The ground.
Up there, we have a copy of that somewhere, we could utilize that and just change the word either. All right, uh, any reports? No, payroll eligibility, salary change?
I have a payroll eligibility and Randy Calford is on, um, he isn't on the agenda, but I guess technically this comes under payroll eligibility verification and uh, so if he's ready to.
Is there a motion to approve, Emily, for the treasurer's office?
Absolutely.
Second, I'll second it, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Randy, are you available? Basically, the person, he, he doesn't have somebody that can cover him, and basically.
He's asked, or?
Well, not really, because they, they can choose who they wanna be, yeah, so um, one of, the one that he retired last quit, and now he's backed down to not having
anybody.
Somebody when he needs him, so he's gotta do something. And it's not gonna be double-bol, I mean, not many people want that kind of, I mean, it's basically it's, it's when Randy needs somebody and that's about it, so.
Saturdays, and I think, yeah, whenever he's.
And not every Saturday, but when he needs vaca, you know, he's got vacation built up, he's had some other issues, and he needs somebody to, to cover for him. So it's kind of like the um, historian, where you just need somebody.
Sure.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Yeah, hard to find full-time, let alone occasion.
Does he have a list?
I'm not sure, I don't know. And maybe we can get him on the agenda next year. Yeah, we'll just keep going, we gotta keep.
Considering it's retired, it's just waiting for for the day to end.
Okay, well, let's keep moving, then, any liquor license? Um, resolution twenty twenty-four oh six to resolution to approve dispersment of funds for the American Rescue Plan Act.
I have to put that back on in case you guys wanted to act on that.
We're all good, we got that figured out, right?
Yep, Carlos sent us, what was motion and second, the entities that it was going to.
Yeah. Ah, so this resolution basically stating the approval of the eighty thousand dollars each to each of the three ambulance services that provide service here in the county that we discussed, that go to Mason City Fire, for city ambulance, and Northwood Volunteer Fire Company. Uh. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero six?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
There is.
All right, any other discussion on it? If not, a vote, a roll call vote, Lowberg?
Aye.
Uh, maybe?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Uh, set a hearing date, proposed fiscal year twenty-five property tax levy.
And I think we're kind of decided on where we're gonna be for levies, so it's time that we can determine that the, that notice is fine, and I can get it to a mailman's paper and all that good stuff, that's the first um first notice, and that's the one that has to get, I have to get all the cities and schools, same one, and then that's when um, the mailing will go out to everybody, and I'm sure they're reading, so um what we can do now is we can set that hearing no sooner than um um, what was it, March twenty-fifth? And um, the only thing that I was wondering is, it's gotta be a separate date. Yeah, so it's got, it's gotta be like on its own, that we, we could have it like, we could have a separate agenda before the meeting, or after the meeting, or whatever, but no, it can't be that meeting. And some people are doing it like at seven o'clock at night, so that people can actually attend if they want, but I it's up to you guys what you wanna do. So if you have it at like
Probably definitely get it going to this.
Mm-hmm, so either you have it at like eight o'clock in the morning, or ten o'clock in the morning, or whatever, separate from the regular.
Five thirty AM, see if anyone else will get up and come join us.
Let's go after, I would say.
Yeah.
But the earliest we can do it is March twenty-fifth.
Yes.
So could we set it for like after that meeting?
For like ten o'clock?
March twenty-fifth?
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion, that conservative.
Yeah. Motion second for next levy, public hearing will be March twenty-fifth, ten AM, North County Courthouse. Any other discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Mike Galloway will be joining us at nine o'clock, uh, water system improvement. Now Jason's hoping to see something any day now, so hopefully that'll keep moving forward. Uh, Winworth Becko, Melissa.
Morning.
Morning.
I just have a few uh, webinars tomorrow, and then the Winnebago County's legislative forums are on Friday, and I'm working with Jane for the legislative forums, um, possibly in the next week.
Sounds good, let us know as soon as you get a date.
You bet.
I'll be probably reaching out to you sometime today, afternoon between all my meetings, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
You bet.
Uh, EMS discussion. Gonna cover all that last week, we're meeting again this week. Gathering all of our petitions and all that, make sure we're on the got the percentages we need, so like I said, the eighteenth, I don't deserve tentative, this one will be bringing it to us, so. Until then, gotta sit and idle. Uh, building repairs.
Uh, I got back to both of them, they're pretty much identical, they both know what's going on and what needs to get done, and uh I got two bids here, one of them's from North Electric at two thousand five hundred and forty dollars, and the other one is from Kruger Electric at three thousand three hundred and seventy dollars fifty cents. But I, I just made sure they knew everything that needed to get done that I wrote down that day when we met, there's with them.
So we're getting apples to apples on?
We're getting apples to apples.
Sure.
They do realize that they one of the concerns of mine was they the weeks that these are gonna be done, they realize, especially with the magistrate room, that they have to be kind of on a call basis, come back in here, and there's some other things they gotta do within here, so.
While the, while the state people.
While the state people are here, yep.
Okay.
So.
So you got a mo, on a motion to approve the North Electric bid?
I would make a motion to approve the North Electric bill, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries?
Now I don't know, I didn't ask them about, cause I, I dug back in my emails and found out that the week of April first is the magistrate room being done, and the week of April twenty-second, the district court room is being done. Uh do you want me to get back in touch with them and make sure that they are aware of those weeks of?
Yeah, let them know they got the work and
Yeah.
The timeline, it's gonna be done.
Yep.
I'd appreciate that.
Takes one thing off your plate.
Yeah.
Good. Uh, boiler repairs, you guys saw that?
Yep.
I saw it from Levi on repairs.
Oh, the good thing we saw that and followed this and we could get to them.
Got six.
I just wanted to run it through you guys.
Should keep it going.
Nobody in here gonna help us split wood if we get out into that kind of heat, so.
Yeah, motion to approve that.
Yeah, please.
So.
Mark's got a motion to approve Levi's estimate for boiler repair, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I should say Levi, I should say Larson Plumbing, um, all right.
So it's enough.
All in favor I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, you gonna contact Levi and let him know?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
All right, so.
The next one you'll just skip, I just.
Oh, the church, okay.
Uh, you're gonna go in at two thirty minutes.
Yep, wind energy, um, we saw the Winnebago one, that looked good to everybody, can we, should move forward, and put our names on it? Do you have a is that a word document, or, or we either change it, or?
Well, it's not an order document, so, and I don't think, I mean, you should just look at it, or?
Actually, yeah, so. Make it fit our county. Well, I don't want to hear that. Okay, do that, then we can, we'll take action next week, and people service. Hi, guys.
Hey. How's it going?
It's cool. Not bad.
Um. You wanna start?
Yeah, sure. So I guess the first thing I wanna bring up is, uh, the way we've been doing our report reports. We, it's like this month's, we're reporting right now, we're reporting January, and it's the end of February, I'd like to change that, so that way in March, we'll report February's and March's, so from then, from there on, it'll just be current.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
We'd like, we'd like to bump to the
Beginning.
Meeting at a month.
So we leave you guys on here all the time, so if you ever, you ever walk in, obviously if there's something we need to take action on, you need to let us know, so we can, but you guys can come in here and talk to us anytime, so if you just send a report to us and say, we'll be there Monday, that's all we need.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That would be perfect, um, in the month of January, we had a DNR inspection of the generators, the wastewater plant. Good, um and that's it for the month of January, other than the regulatory water, you know, meter readings and everything like that.
Did you get that email that I sent you, that it was the second, you're taking care of that?
Yeah, we got here that right here, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Um, question I got for you guys, and I know it's against people's, I shouldn't say their policy, but they're not doing lead and copper inventory for these communities. Do you think it's gonna be an issue for you guys to figure out what it is for six customers for us?
Yeah, we talked about that, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be that difficult for us to take care of.
On that one, I, I just think, cause you guys got access to the building, you can get in there, you go in there and read their meters. If you could just look and see what's in there and take care of that, that would be awesome, cause always we'd have to reach out, try to get in the everywhere, you guys already know where to go, and you said, six customers we have, there shouldn't be any let out there, it's all new enough. I mean, it's early two thousands, mid-two thousands, so I think we're plenty good, but I guess we gotta show the, show the inventory, so.
And that has to be done by October.
Yes.
So we appreciate that, if you wanna, if you wanna get it done, and we can submit it or whatever we need to do, but if you could just put it together on their form or whatever, and then we'll submit it to the DNR, they'll grade.
Just, that's something to take care of.
Okay.
Um, one thing that we've talked about when we talked about with the heat, uh, last week, was just opening up discussion on either annual or biannual. Just come out and take a tour, the board, um, we would, we think that that would benefit all of us. Just so you can see where the money's being spent, see how the facilities look, um I, I just think that's important, uh and, and you guys can decide, like I said, annual, biannual. Once a month, I, we don't, we don't care, we're, we're not trying to hide anything. We want to be a hundred percent transparent about how things look, and you know, look, you know, it's ten years old, so there's, you know, there's things that come up, and as you guys are aware, you know, becoming more aware of, so so yeah, I, I think that we've talked about that, and we all agree that that's would be a good idea.
Yeah, no, that's good, in fact, we could plan something soon, maybe, just to go out there all three of us, cause that's been a while since I've been out there, not at all.
I've been there once.
It's like, I've been there once, and I asked Chris to check my water.
Yep.
So maybe we'll try to do that before busy season hits here for us. I should say, it's sort of busy on this side, but our patient side, that makes it tougher to get, get to the little extra stuff.
The first week here for a job, I mean. Hopefully we cover budgets.
Yeah.
And have everything planned.
Well, true.
We'll try to plan that, we'll, we'll probably do it like, we'll do it like after a meeting on Monday or something, first week of April, we'll let you guys know.
Weather permitting.
Yeah.
Um, we will, we'll report on this next month, but we did have a, uh, we did have a DNR inspection on Friday uh, with Carl Berg and Matt Cox for the actual wastewater treatment facility, and overall it went really well, uh, we expect some recommendations, pretty much kind of part of it, of course, um, but overall, it, it went really well, so.
Yeah.
Like I said, we'll have that report, we should have that report by next meeting, um, so we'll.
Yeah, this sounds good, so, anything else, guys? Well, you guys, yeah, we appreciate the time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right. Uh, budget update, I think we're monkey with that today. So we're gonna be chatting with Mike here shortly. Uh, department head discussion.
Um, I did talk to Renee last week, and what I'm doing for my staff is giving a weekly update on Fridays on what we're moving forward with and what's actual factual, and not just rumor mill out there.
Thank goodness.
I don't know if you guys would want to be included on that email, I can send that out, or I can do my updates on Mondays, it doesn't matter either way.
Updates and running, it's more than that.
Okay, um, we did get, the civil service board did meet on Friday, we got testing on April twenty-seventh for the deputy positions. We have a twenty-eight E meeting at one o'clock today, which hopefully will get more direction on which way we're going with the jail. And I do got quotes out there, I just got quotes in for the video system for the transport vehicle, which we'll be looking at them, and I got Sam working on the laptop and the OMG and all that kind of stuff, so we just start getting that vehicle set up and have it ready to go with everything we're gonna do. So that's kind of what we got done last week on that.
Yeah. Any other department heads? Maybe on the Zoom? Okay. Uh, I think we gotta put on the agenda for next week, for future. Anybody else going on to ISAC?
So good, true. What's that? I never turned it in.
I haven't turned it in.
Thursday.
We have till, I saw that. We have till the twenty-ninth, but there's one day I noticed I'd like to go, is it Thursday?
Well, and Wednesday morning looks good, too.
Is that one with Christie talking?
No, that's Thursday, too.
Wednesday.
Yeah, it's the, the one, the educational one is on Wednesday morning, and then it goes into House File seven eighteen again, with a joint with both of us. But the county one looked like it'd be a good thing to look at, too.
Yeah, I'm gonna go for all of it, I've never participated in that county debt capital, so I'm gonna go and see what that's all about. Still, stay down, stay down there. At least for Thursday, and um, can't remember what was on Friday, I think, I think there was one thing on Friday, it was Thursday, but I'm pretty much gonna be there for the whole time, so.
We have till the twenty-ninth to register.
Okay, yeah, for a suit, going to the co, you know what?
I felt, I felt underdressed when I went.
I don't really care, we know where I'm from.
The old day was it.
Not quite, he looked really high, but we're close.
You should forget about on the floor, but.
Well, what's the difference, I see a lot of guys wearing a suit, coat, and jeans.
Yes, but that's the style.
That's the style.
I mean, it's like.
I got a he can ball.
Thanks, Rich. A little fit.
Yeah.
Look over the shoulders.
All right. Well, I think we've got everything other than our session with Mike Galloway, is that correct? Yes. Oh, no, sorry. Yes, you have anything?
Just a budget workshop, you guys were there.
Mark?
Budget workshop, and then also at Central, I'll do a retention, um, just regular monthly meeting, it's still going there, good. To your country, unfortunately, our numbers are still up as far as present, detention, detention ease, I guess, um yeah, general discussion too, I guess, on county budgets, with some people that kind of come up, we had an open forum, but just kind of got off on a sidetrack, yeah, so a lot of county budgets are running into trouble, and a couple here in North Iowa, one man was talking about having to raise a a million and a half dollars to their budget, and another one was looking at a million dollars, and they were looking at cutting, um you know, there's some interesting discussion on what they're gonna be cutting, and directions they would be going, so, um lots of fun stuff yet to do, so.
Only beginning, right?
Yep.
Yeah, well, that's what I had last week for budget workshop, and uh Farm Bureau meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Mark and I went to that, Dan was there, it was a good meeting, had some discussions on uh our budgets and cuts and ambulance service.
Yeah, always consider the bridges and stuff, so see if we can get those working or schedules.
Right, yeah. But like, yeah, it was just a good, good roundtable discussion, I thought, but.
Yep.
That's all I had, so.
Okay.
All right, is, was Mike getting on Zoom or, or phone, okay, so this possible exact session, session, do we wanna ask him about that first?
Yeah, and I wouldn't say anything about specific stuff until we know, we might go into a closed session, so that we're not.
That's all we're not, yeah, we'll question that first.
I'm kind of wondering if we should have done that, when we started talking about going a different route with Sharon, but cause we don't want your remote to be starting like with you guys, so sorry, you were the key to it, but.
So are we going in closed session with him right off the bat?
Oh, we'll see what he says, we can stay here and we'll see what he says. What we need to do, and then we'll follow his direction, he's an attorney, right?
Yes.
And I might have to figure out if I need to order it or not, and. And I might have to figure out if I need to sort it or not and.
Mike Galloway, I'm unavailable, please leave your name and number.
Well, we can handle it a little bit, I guess. One of your budget, we'll have to start rolling on that still, so, am I good? Mike?
Hey, sorry, I didn't know we were converting yet.
Oh, sorry, I thought we were. I, I, I must have not sent the next email, sorry.
That's all, no, this actually works.
Good deal.
Um, Mike, AJ Stone here, so you're in our meeting on speakerphone.
Okay.
Um, and you know what we're asking for discussions about what we're capable of with hiring freezes, all that stuff and some others. Um, is that something we need to go into closed session over?
Um, well, it's the board's prerogative, right? You don't have to go in, uh, but you have the ability to under twenty one point nine.
Okay.
Because you're gonna be impacting terms and conditions of employment.
Okay, and anything normally we do when it comes to employment, those kinda discussions, we always like to go closed session, so. Okay, I think that's what.
Everybody knows, right? I, I mean, i- if we go into one, there's no action as you guys know.
Yeah.
We're just information.
And then I need to, and I need to record it?
Um, it, yeah, I would, it's twenty one point nine, it's really can be, there's, under Iowa code, there's two exemptions. For collective bargaining and collective bargaining stat- strategy sessions, and then this, an exempt versus a closed is. It's the difference, right? I mean, exempt is really so the board could actually go to negotiations or meet with employees. You don't necessarily have to keep minutes, but I kinda recommend it in situations like this in case we were have, if there was ever a question. And treat it just like a closed session.
Okay, so we're looking at an exempt session, basically is what you're saying, right? Okay. All right, well, I'm going to recess our regular meeting. And, uh, take a motion to, uh, go into exempt session per code Iowa twenty one point nine.
Absolutely.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Lowberg?
Aye.
So maybe?
Aye.
Stone, aye. All right, we're in exempt section, guys, gotta clear the room, sorry.
I, um, I would like to have Teresa here for payroll.
Payroll, she's, yep, that's fine.
And I'm gonna see, I have you on my phone, I'm gonna see if I can get my reporter to work.
So do I, do I need to clear the, uh, people in the Zoom as well?
I don't know how to work, and, yeah, we're shutting off.
Do I stop recording?
Yeah, stop recording, we're done with the Zoom part.